Please.
Farmer.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly. Bachmann.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. All right. Welcome, everyone who came in today to brave the cold. I'm going to give it to Amanda to tee it up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, back in June of 2023, the City Council authorized staff to engage Claytoner's group to do a thoroughfare plan for the city of Clayton. As part of that, one of the things in the contract was they would come and give an update to City Council, and that's what we're going to do this evening. So I will turn it over to Mr. Sam Morton.
Is that an average, or is that just we picked a random day?
So some of the data is basically like a random day. Probably some of them that are ODOT performed, that they did some additional calculations for to come up with like a 30 at highest, we'll say, volume for the year. But I would say that most of these are probably just random days that they take accounts for.
Okay, thanks.
So we took the data that we had collected from ODOT and the RPC, and we had provided that to back to NVRPC for their use in forecasting to 2050 years. So we sent that over to them. There was the, we provided, I mean, they have access to the Plan Clayton document that you guys have worked on previously. And then we also provided a list of developments that were in the works that we knew about to them. So they could take all of that information and put it through their traffic forecasting model, and then they return to us growth values for these different cap locations, which we put towards forecasting to the 2050 date. So you can kind of go through, and it's easier, I'm sure, you know, if you're interested in specific locations, like flipping back and forth helps give you an idea of where the growth is at. I would say most of the cap locations didn't grow more than 5% to 10% from what they were forecasting outside of the interstate, the ramps. And then I think just near ramped locations like on 48 and on 49, those ones grew a little bit more. So a lot of the local roadways and collectors and things like that in Clayton didn't see a lot of growth from what they were forecasting. This next one is the speed limits that you guys currently have. So you can see color code wise, kind of the lighter, the cooler colors are slower. The red, warmer colors are a higher speed limit. So kind of just at a high level, you look at it, you see there's a lot of 35 mile per hour roadways within Clayton. There's a few locations that are a little bit higher, obviously outside of the interstate, but the state routes are higher, US 40, a little bit higher. And then in our coordination with you guys so far, we saw that you guys have done some speed studies somewhat recently with Choice One Engineering. So they identified a few locations. I'm guessing per your request and investigation that they wanted maybe to see if they could lower the speed limit. So I have those here on this next slide, and I clouded those locations. So it looks like where it is clouded, Westwood, US 40, part of, is that 48? I mix them up in my head. The speed limit looks like it'd be lowered about five miles per hour. I think maybe there's like 10 miles.
Do you want questions now, or at the end? So going back to the last slide, when you look at the estimated future traffic for 2050, so you said that it went up around 10%. Well, when you look at 70 and Southway, that went up from 2,700 to 4,100-ish in purple. But then Hoke Road for the increase, it's 7,200. So that one stayed the same at Hoke and Wanger, 7,200. And we have basically, like, that's where a Walmart is, and that's where a proposed, like, roundabout has been discussed. So there's no increase there, which I find interesting. And then down the road a little bit, went from 6,700 to 7,000, which isn't 10%. And to the left of that is North Clayton and lots of potential for development there. So that did not go up 10%. So I wondered what the deviation was for that area. So for that intersection at Wanger and Hoke, because even down Wanger, 6,300 to 2050 projection is the same exact number of 6,300. Amanda, Randy, I don't know the interjection of, you know, I know that we've said, if ODOT says that's where a roundabout should go, is ODOT going to say a roundabout should go there because there's going to be an increase in the future? Or you can keep it a four-way stop because your 2050 projection is the exact same as 2022?
So I think when you look particularly at that intersection, as it's zoned right now, it's not zoned for business. In our plan, it does have business and mixed use. And I think that that may be what they're looking at, is if it just stays residential, you're going to have the few houses that are there and not the proposed future development at 2050, when that comes down the pike. So I think that may be where the disconnect is.
Okay.
Yeah, didn't you say this is based on information that you currently have on how spaces are going to be used?
Yeah.
So the development changes could happen next year, which could throw everything out as far as what the projected numbers could be totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah, for instance, there's houses on Wanger Road, there's like about 30 houses going in. So that, they haven't been built yet, but five years from now, the numbers that you project forward could be totally different as they projected for, you know, 2050, just based on that changes in the next five years.
Yeah, and so. We're doing it now, we know what we know now, and in five years, things are different. It can be updates based to how these were forecasted for the 2055 year.
The forecasts go every five years? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, as far as.
Any questions? Oh, go, go.
The roads you were looking at, those are the roads that Clayton is responsible for, because I know here in the region, story I've been told by Randy is that we're responsible for 200 miles of road, Inglewood's around 20. So I was expecting what I saw for what was highlighted was that's what we're responsible for. Is that, is that accurate?
I have a question that, actually, this might be more for Randy. So we have this information for our city, and as Travis said, you know, we share with other, a lot of other entities around here. So how do we, how do we work one plan? Do we do that? Is it, I mean, how do we communicate with the other cities? do we communicate with the other cities?
Well, in one of the other ways, the interconnectivity between all of those, us and our surrounding cities is MVRPC. I mean, they're a very big player in making sure that those projects kind of all interconnect. And you get better grant funding if whatever we're planning flows into what they're planning.
Any other questions or comments?
The only other thing I would have to say is for Amanda, um, the proposed future speed limits, there's nothing on here about a year. So what is the thinking with that?
So, um, with this, so we did have Choice One. Remember, if you recall, a few months ago, actually it was maybe early last year, we had a work session to talk about speed limits within the city. And we asked Choice One to go through and look at, and do speed studies on those roads to see which ones we could actually reduce. Um, if council does decide to do that, I'll get that information out to you. Um, does decide to reduce those speed limits, then we would need to bring an ordinance to council and then ODOT would have to approve that. And then we could lower the speed limits. Now, on our own roads, like with Westbrook Road, I don't think ODOT really cares what we do with that. If we want to just lower that, we can do that. Um, but as far as timing, um, we've had so much on the agenda that it's not something that has been pressing for me. Um, but that is something now that we're talking about this, now that we're actually getting the thoroughfare plan, um, up and going, that we can bring forward to council and you can make a decision on what you want to do. And that way they can have the information before the completion of the plan.
I thought this was for 1950, Amanda. The, the speed limits aren't for 1952 or 2050, excuse me.
Well, they may have been that speed in 1950, I'm not sure. Um, but no, those could be all the way through 2050 if whatever council is here in 2050 decides to maintain them at that speed. Or if the population hasn't changed so much, then it necessitates a change.
I thought we weren't going to change them until 2050, is what I meant.
No, no, no.
For, for some of the, like, uh, you know, some of the ones that we're proposing to ODOT, is there about, you know, an approximate timeline that usually takes, uh, like, for example, okay, if we get more, uh, yeah, I didn't, you know, it's, it's higher levels of government, it could take a day, it could take 20 years. Um, I mean, I'm just using that as an example, like something like if, if more development comes, you know, in the northern part here, obviously this stuff doesn't, you know, pop up like that, but, uh, you know, if it was suddenly like, oh, we need to, you know, we need to see if we can reduce 40, you know?
Well, so that's an interesting one. So for that particular section of 40 that runs through Clayton that abuts the high school, we had talked specifically about that one because, what are they going, 45 or so? And then they hit the 20 mile an hour at the school zone. And, uh, we had called that out, Choice One in particular, because one is dangerous when you get to Crestway and you're going that fast and then it drops. And the issue with that one, um, it was kind of a stretch for them to tell us that, yeah, we could drop it to whatever it is, I'm sorry, I can't see on here, whatever it is that we were going to drop it to, because there just wasn't the traffic counts there. They're just not there. There aren't enough people, even during the school year, traveling that road to drop it any farther.
Anything else? Hearing nothing. I'll say thank you for presentation, very informative and. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. We look forward to working with you on this. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the workshop?
So moved second.
Motion to close the workshop by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the workshop is closed.